The time is now seven oh two and I'm reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District two oh four on Monday, April eighth, two thousand nineteen. Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
Ms. Grover?
Here.
Ms. Demming?
Here.
Mr. Rising?
Here.
Ms. Peal?
Here.
Mr. Resack?
Here.
Mr. Carubus?
Here.
And we do have a quorum. Susan, will you please lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the Father, and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have several boards salutes today. I'm going to start with Mrs. Grover.
The board salutes Indian Prairie School District two oh four for being recognized as part of the Autism Awareness Month by the City of Naperville, as an organization dedicated to improve the education, skills, communications, life skills, and job opportunities for students with autism spectrum disorder. The board commends District two oh four staff for their tireless commitment to our students. Thank you.
Mr. Rising?
You want just one or two?
Both of them, sir.
Okay. The National Association of Music Merchants Foundation, N A M M, NAM, Foundation, named District two oh four as one of the two thousand nineteen best communities for music education, and that's in the country. District two oh four is one of six hundred and twenty-three districts in the nation to receive this recognition. The award acknowledges schools and districts across the country for their commitment and support for music education. The selection process is based on music class participation, instruction, facilities, and overall support for the music education program. This is the eighth consecutive year our K twelve music program has received this national recognition. Congratulations to all our music teachers who provide outstanding music opportunities for our students. Super exciting one here. The board salutes Niqua Valley graduate Grace Seabolt for winning three medals in the Special Olympics World Games in Abu Dhabi. Grace took home the gold medal in the hundred meter freestyle, the silver medal in the fifty meter freestyle. She also took the silver medal in the hundred meter freestyle relay. Congratulations to Grace, her whole family, her whole community and neighborhood on this outstanding accomplishment. Great job.
Thank you. Ms. Peal?
Nice one. Okay, all three Indian Prairie High Schools recognized as Project Lead the Way Distinguished Schools. The board salutes our three high schools on being recognized as Project Lead the Way Distinguished Schools. The Project Lead the Way recognition program is designed to honor districts and schools committed to increasing student access, engagement, and achievement in Project Lead the Way programs. Project Lead the Way Distinguished Schools are empowering students to thrive in an evolving world and have achieved exemplary results from their programs. District two oh four has three of eleven high schools in the state to receive this honor for the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year. Congratulations to all involved.
Thank you. Mr. Carubus?
District two oh four teacher named Young Professional of the Year. Congratulations to Derek Beal, my son's P E teacher at Patterson Elementary, who was recently recognized as the Illinois Association for Health Physical Education and Recreation and Dance Northeastern District Young Professional of the Year. The award is given in recognition of outstanding and structural performance for physical education, as well as in adaptive dance, health, and leisure education. Honoraries have shown their great ability to motivate today's youth to participate in a lifetime of physical activity. Congratulations, Derek. Thanks.
Ms. Donahue?
The board salutes the Warriors Hockey Club, featuring players from Wabonzi Valley and Matia Valley, who won the Blackhawk Cup over rival Glenbard in double overtime. That's exciting. Congratulations to Zach Pierce, who was the M V P. Thanks to his four assists in the game. The Warriors brought home the second state championship in program history. Congratulations to the players and coaches.
Thank you. And Ms. Demming?
Business Professionals of America State and National Qualifiers. The board salutes students from all three District two oh four high schools, who were recently named Business Professionals of America National Qualifiers. Matia Valley has twenty-two national qualifiers, Niqua Valley has twenty-nine, and Wabonzi Valley has thirty-seven. Good luck at the national conference in May, and congratulations to each of these B P A students and their advisors.
Thank you. And Mr. Rising?
Yeah, I just wanted to add regarding Grace, our amazing world champion Special Olympian. Not only was she a graduate of Niqua Valley, but also a proud attendee of our STEPS program, who's got a wonderful Special Olympics program there. So I just wanted to mention that as well.
Thank you. It's now time for our student representative report. It's from Niqua Valley High School. And Aria Naluri is our student representative. There he is. Hi, Aria. He also has the principal with him. Hello, Mr. McBride, Dr. McBride.
Hello, my name is Aria Naluri, and I'm your school representative from Niqua Valley. Niqua kicked off their new access program, which allocates a thirty-minute period every Wednesday for students to visit their teachers, work with their peers, or catch up on homework. I personally really like the free period to get ahead on homework or work with a teacher. I don't normally have the time to meet with outside of class, and I know you'll be coming to check it out, so I hope you enjoy your visit. Thank you to the N V social workers for hosting Hello My Name Is, where students, teachers, and even some alumni share some of their stories dealing with harmful labels. Congrats to Michael O'Connor for winning Mister N V H S, and we hosted another successful Young Hearts for Life event, providing free heart screenings for more than two thousand five hundred students. Thank you to all the administrators that helped make that happen, and to the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation for their support. Congrats to Wrestling for a great end to their season with two state finalists, and congrats to speech team as well for an amazing end to their season. With four state finalists, including Arneet Kurtada, state champion, Niqua could not be more proud. Congrats to Chad Allen and Trudy Penorth for being named Coach of the Year in their respective sports. Congrats to Boy Swim and Dive for their second-place state finish, and shout out to Sean Foo and Anuva Shandilia for being placed on the Daily Herald Leadership Team, and War for High School Seniors, who have exhibited outstanding leadership during their high school years. Thank you to Ms. Mueller, Ms. Wilkins, and Mr. Fuse for hosting the Science Olympiad Regional with twenty-six high schools and even more middle schools, and great job on their first-place finish. Thank you to the Music Department for the plethora of amazing concerts during March, Music in Our Schools Month, a celebration of music and renewed daylight. Thank you to Mr. Rossi and the English Department for organizing Writers Week, our annual celebration of professional, student, and staff writing. It was really amazing to see the diversity of voices coming from the Niqua body. All Niqua members of the class of two thousand nineteen who earned an Indian Prairie Scholars Award were honored at our March twentieth event. Great job, seniors. After a well-deserved spring break, Wildcats returned ready for the Niqua Honor Ceremony, honoring key students across campus that exemplify values of leadership, spirit, equity, contribution, or persistence. Great job to all the participants in the Monologue Show and intimate showcase of some of the most talented poets and writers of our school, and good luck to all the juniors taking the S A T tomorrow, and to the sophomores and freshmen for the P S A T. And that would be everything Niqua's been up to lately. Thank you, and again, as always, go Wildcats.
Thanks. It is now time for public comment for non-agenda items. If you are here to speak to an agenda item, that comment will be taken immediately prior to that item. Thirty minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Our first speaker is Shanaz Ekobal. Welcome.
Good evening, respected board members and everyone here. So today I'm here to raise the concern regarding the special education in District two oh four. I feel that many children with disabilities in this school district are not being educated in the least restrictive environment, as mentioned in ideal law. In spite of, in spite of parents asking their placement, they are being denied repeatedly. District two oh four expresses on their website that how much they believe in inclusion, and it says that we continually strive to support inclusive practices while customizing the learning experience for each of our students. I would like to see this put into practice for every child in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is C J Davis. Hi, welcome.
C J Davis, son is a student at Matia. First of all, I'd like to start off saying I was a township official in Michigan. I appreciate the job you do. I know sometimes it's more challenging than others. I come to you today to talk about the bathroom situation at Matia. Some of you are probably aware that they have shut down a good number of them due to vaping issues. There is a letter here I can submit to you, but as some of you probably know, this violates OSHA's laws, Occupation Safety and Health Administration, and oddly enough, even U N Charter, by not giving children accents. Handicapped people, I have people that are near and dear to me that have anxiety orders. Ladies here in the room can appreciate what it's like being a fourteen-year-old girl, trying to deal with the things that they're dealing with as their body changes and they're being cut off. We did talk to people at Matia who said that they were going to have attendance outside of the bathrooms that were open. My child has taken video evidence of that not happening, and it's just quite frankly disturbing to me. In the research I have done, there are vaping monitors you can get for about a hundred and fifty bucks and put them in there. I am a proud, proud graduate of nineteen eighty-four from Wabonzi Valley, Go Warriors. And we used to deal a lot with cigarette and god knows what else smoking in those bathrooms, and we had Mr. Nordgren took care of the problem quite effectively. We had teachers, some of those laws may have changed, that monitored the bathrooms. I'm fairly confident you can get some people like myself who have daytime availability to help monitor those bathrooms. But quite frankly, it's just disturbing to me that our solution is punishing thousands of children for the work, the bad deeds of a few. So I would really appreciate it if this board could take a look at that and do something to change it, because I just believe it's completely unfair to put my child uncomfortable, along with the other people that we have mentioned uncomfortable. I have a feeling if it's happening at Matia, it's probably happening in other places, and I know it's an extreme challenge for everybody to deal with the things that we all have to deal with in school, but once again, to punish all the students for the act of a few seems to me to be a bit extreme, very extreme, and quite frankly, dangerous, and makes children uncomfortable. My child will sometimes wait all day to go to the bathroom and run home from the bus to go. So I'm sure he is not the only one, and as once again, the other ladies that are involved here have things that are issue. If a child is uncomfortable and having to deal with one of the basic needs of life, my guess is they're not learning real well. And that is the goal of this board, and certainly all the parents involved in this area. And I would appreciate if you guys could put some input into that and help effect a change. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now moving on with the agenda. We go to our consent agenda and superintendent report. We will begin with the superintendent report.
Okay, election season is over, and I want to congratulate Natasha Grover and Mark Rising and Justin Carubus. I'm being re-elected to the school board. On April twenty-ninth, we will hold our board reorganization meeting, and we will administer that very long oath of office to all of you. I couldn't help it.
It's usually amended twice as long, oath of office.
So while election season is over, we're in the midst of state accountability testing season, which our student mentioned. So last week and this week, most of our elementary and middle schools have been giving the Illinois Assessment of Ruddiness, the I A R, which replaced the park exam. And tomorrow, our high schools will be administering the College Board S A T suite of assessments. So our freshman students will complete the P S A T eight-nine, sophomores will complete the P S A T ten, and junior students will complete the S A T. So a big day at our high schools tomorrow. We have an event coming up that we want to mention. That's our multicultural reading night, which is cosponsored by our bilingual parent advisory council and our parent diversity advisory council. It will be this, it'll be on Thursday, April twenty-fifth. Do I have that right? Yes, April twenty-fifth, at Still Middle School from six-thirty to nine-thirty. It's a wonderful event that celebrates the diversity of the district, so there'll be guest bilingual readers, free books for students, raffles, and much more, and I think you can find more information on our website, and I think even a couple of board members have volunteered to take part in that. And finally, I want to bring up Team I P E F. This will be our sixth year in the fall. We started with only thirty-one runners. I know last year we had over five nineteen. So I've asked Alicia Johnson to come forward and give us a little bit of an update and maybe share the most recent challenge that's in place. So the deadline is Friday, right?
No, no.
Or Monday. That's right, Monday, Monday, Monday.
A few more days, Monday, yeah, a week from today. Thank you, Dr. Sullivan, and hello to the board members. Thank you all for having me here tonight. I appreciate it. Any chance to talk about the foundation and Team I P E F, I will take. So I'm Alicia Johnson, the executive director of the foundation. And as many of you know, the foundation, we partner with the district to fundraise, to enrich our students' lives, to bring programs such as Back on Track, the Fine Arts Festival that's coming up on May eighteenth, robotics programs, the A Plus Program, a lot, a lot of great programs that we support. In order to do that and sustain, we do have to fundraise. And one way that we do that is through, like Dr. Sullivan said, Team I P E F. It is our sixth year. Started out with twenty-one people. We are up to tonight, I just checked, three hundred and twenty-two runners. So we are excited about that, and thank you to those who have already signed up. The event does take place on October the twentieth with a five K and a half marathon. If, if any of you are not half marathonist, I am not, so there is a five K available for, for those who would like to participate in that. So we, we love this event because half of the funds raised go directly back into the individual schools. Great program. The other fifty percent then is distributed to those various programs that the foundation does support, the Young Hearts for Life, the Valley Runway, the Teacher Grants Program, et cetera. The other reason we love it, it's an opportunity to bring community members together, working together towards one common goal. Students, teachers, administrators, family members, neighbors, board members, superintendents, principals. So it's just a, a great event. We would like to invite you to join if you haven't. I know many of you already have signed up, so thank you for that. Registration does close a week from tonight at five P M, and like Dr. Sullivan said, we do have an incentive going on right now. It's our pop-up challenge number five. So the school with the most runners registered by five P M on Monday evening, April the fifteenth, will be awarded an additional one thousand dollars sponsored by Mimi Insurance. So we certainly appreciate the support, continued support over the years from Mimi. So spread the word, join the fun. We are very excited. We also have the Kids Marathon, which will take place on October nineteenth. More information will be coming out about that as well. So check out our website, contact me if you have any additional questions. Anyone here? Questions?
Okay, so I haven't signed up yet. I'm going to sign up, and hopefully we'll have a great walking crew, right, Lori?
Right, so that's what I wanted to say. So you say five K and then half marathon, but it's also a lot of people that walk with five K.
Like us, right.
So you won't be in, you won't be by yourself if you're a walker.
That's right. So we'll have a great walking group, so I invite anybody else who has not signed up.
There you go, Mark Rising.
To join us. We did a great job last year.
Jackie has committed.
We power walked it. It was great, right? And we can do it again. So we want to encourage, we want to, we want to beat that five hundred
That's right.
that we had last year.
I just want to point out I already signed up.
Jackie was one of our first registrants, so maybe the, the first one. So, and if, if you're not able to participate, we also have the opportunity to join in through our school spirit squad. So we love having people come out and just support any way they can, cheer, cheer on the runners and the walkers, and it's a really fun day of community, so consider coming out.
And you get one of those yellow shirts.
Yes, show your uniform.
Yes, the yellow shirt. My new favorite color. Thank you.
I think people need to be, oh.
You want?
No.
People need to be aware that they have to sign up by five o'clock on Monday, right? Even though the event is in October, the sign up is in the next few days, so.
Yep, yep. We'll be sending out more information, and we encourage you to sign up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I signed up this morning.
Thank you, Matt.
We now move to the consent agenda portion. I need a motion to approve consent agenda items D through R.
Sorry. I make a motion to approve consent agenda items D, D through R, as noted.
Do I have, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Jackie, call the roll, please.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Peal?
Aye.
Ms. Grover? Mr. Resack?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Motion passes. We now move to our action items. Our action item is the approval of middle school social studies curriculum, and I need a motion to approve the curriculum.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the middle school social studies curriculum as presented.
There's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Ms. Pease?
Good evening. I'm here to represent all of the hard work that was done by our social studies curriculum, middle school teachers, under the exemplary leadership of Tara Fowler, who worked very hard to provide you and our students with middle school social studies curriculum based on the Illinois state standards. This was a process that went for about a year and a half, almost two years. We presented on March fourth to the Board of Education and have had the curriculum available for anyone to provide feedback or to come and view throughout that time. And tonight, we would like to recommend that the Board of Education approve that curriculum.
So I did note that no one did provide any feedback, either positive or negative, to the curriculum?
No.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Pease? Hearing none. Jackie, call the roll, please.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Ms. Grover?
Aye.
Mr. Resack?
Aye.
Ms. Peal?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Discussion portion of the agenda. Our first discussion is Future Ready Technology Plan.
Thank you so much, everyone. I know I'm keeping you from the final four today, so I appreciate you taking the time to hear about the Future Ready Technology Plan. Before we get started, I wanted to call out some of our members of our technology services team who are here tonight. So if you wouldn't mind standing for a moment, introducing yourselves, please. He's Brian.
Carol Bradley-Leece on the server team.
Kent Van Blue Network and Telecom Coordinator.
So I'll talk with you in a little bit about all the exciting things that the district has provided us feedback for, but I wanted to make sure, show my appreciation for our team. This is just a segment of our team, but they've done amazing work getting us to this point, and also laying some foundation for us for many exciting things that you heard about a little bit. So thank you so much for joining us tonight. So again, I'm here today to talk to you about the Future Ready Technology Plan. And again, this is in support of board policy as well as district goals, Goal One and the associated policy list that follows. This touches a lot of different areas than our traditional access to electronic networks, because obviously it's about instructional materials and other resources as well. We've made an intentional shift in building the technology plan to bring forward a promise, rather than bringing forward a mission and a vision, because we believe it's about the relationship that we build with students, teachers, and the district parents and other individuals within the district. So our promise is to make sure that we're advancing a safe and secure and reliable environment that not only fosters exploration and engagement with analytical decision-making, but also about creativity, digital citizenship, critical thinking, and gather, information gathering, so that all students can achieve their greatest potential. That's something that we promised to do, correct? Awesome, great. We've prepped well. That's great. So our guiding principles in developing this plan are about that it's easy to access district resources. We know that we want to make sure we're not introducing barriers to accessing different tools and things that you need to do your job, to be a student, or to access for your children. Also, we want to make sure that we're following the Future Ready two oh four plans that we've already established in the district, but making sure that we also provide support for flexible delivery, instruction, and assessment, as well as many other areas that help support and build life and work skills. And lastly, making sure that as a district, we are security focused. And that's a new area for many districts as they're going through the technology plans, is to make sure that you have a lens towards security, to make sure that folks, while we want to make sure they're conscious of security within their own roles, whether they're a student, a teacher, or a parent, but that we're also layering in some other behind-the-scenes support to help them along the way as well. So from this process, just to help you see what was the overall process for developing the technology plan. So back in September twenty eighteen, which feels like several, several, several months ago with where we've been at this point, I mentioned to you in our annual update that we had a call to action to build a technology plan for the next three years. From there, we sent out our Belief and Perception Survey from November to December of twenty eighteen. In that process, we were able to reach four hundred and forty-four families who responded to our online survey and gathered some amazing insights, as well as two thousand of our students and staff members who responded to the survey call. And that gave us a great next step understanding of where do we focus on when we bring our individuals together and have larger conversations about what's next for the district. From there, I've met one-on-one with each principal within our district and had conversations about the uniqueness of the technology solutions that are in their school, their curricular needs, and a number of different areas. Because as Kathy and I have found, as we go through this relationship, and also this journey of building the technology plan, which again, Kathy's been invaluable in this process of being a great support resource, as well as being a great partner in this, is that technology and curriculum are inextricably linked. Together, they have to do things together to make sure that we're helping our students be successful. In that process, our principals have been an amazing, amazing resource, and you can see their pride for each of their schools when you sit down and have conversations with them. Second, we had our in-person focus groups. We had ten different focus group sessions where we invited teachers, special education instructors, as well as assistant principals, student service coordinators. You can read the list that's on there. There's a massive number of individuals we met with, close to four hundred total across, where we gave them the opportunity to express their opinions, their voice. What are the things they're missing? What's, what do they love to see in their classroom, and what's next? Beyond thinking about what we have available to what's possible, to begin thinking about what can we do with technology. And in March to April twenty nineteen, we started our online focus groups, where we asked parents, community leaders, businesses that we work with, as well as staff members who didn't come to the online or the in-person focus groups to participate online. At this point, we have three hundred and fifty-four participants. By the way, I feel like I P E F given you the number right now, so you should sign up if you haven't for Team I P E F. Again, we had three hundred and fifty-four participants provide over a thousand responses so far within those focus groups. And what's interesting is we're starting to see parents responding to parents, responding to students, and there's a conversation about what's next for technology within the district. So, Mark, I believe you had shared in one of the presentations about the community value and also the community passion about kids and learning, and that really became clear to us as we're going through these online focus groups as well. And then lastly, putting my, my butt in a seat and having lunch with students is my next step, to sit down and talk with kids about what are the things that they need and what's next within their expectations. As you know from the board memo I provided, we had a number of feedback points that came from students within our online focus groups, but I also want to talk to our students under sixth grade to also have their feedback in the process. In each of my principal visits, I've had the opportunity to meet with students and go on tours of the building and talk with students as well, but this is a great way to have a one-on-one conversation at the same time as well. Today, board presentation, easy bullet to check off. We can continue from there. And then in May twenty nineteen, we'll launch our tech plan website. Our goal with this is that it's a transparent access to what's happening within the tech services department in support of the overall three-year plan. You can go there, see what projects we're working on, the status, all the resources, but also hear shining stories about what went well and what we really enjoyed, but also what did we learn through the process? Because we feel this is a great opportunity to not only show things that are going well, but to help other districts learn as they're going through this transition process to, whether it's Microsoft email. to whether it's Microsoft email, or it's for Chromebooks and resources that we use in our classrooms. It's a great way to share out. And then lastly, we'll continue to do our annual updates to the board based on where we are within the process of the three-year plan. I wanted to make sure and introduce to you, we've talked and noticed Gartner and different research points that we've talked about in our memos, but for the district, we are, we are an innovating district. You knew that already before I came up here and talked to you about that for technology. But when you look at Gartner and their hype cycle for education, it talks to you about the emerging technology trends within an industry. And you will often find that education overlaid on top of corporate or business is often skewed a little bit to the left. Education is usually a little late to the party when it comes to government, because, when it comes to corporate, because we have to be, right? We have to make sure that we're ready to adopt different technologies and solutions. I've put in arrows for you in the little gold sections or yellow sections about this peak of inflated expectations. This is back in 2016, about learning analytics, as well as software-as-a-service SIS and digital assessment tools and classroom 3D printing. All those fall into areas where education wasn't necessarily adopting these wide streams. There were a few districts that were trying them, there were great successes, and there were also great learning opportunities or places in which they abandoned those solutions. We already had adopted solutions at that point where Gartner had said, more than 10 years before these solutions become mainstream. Fast forward the clock a little bit to 2018, and again, we look to the gold bands of software-as-a-service, SIS systems, digital assessment tools, classroom 3D printing are still, as of 2018, still five to 10 years off. And again, they're within our LMC locations for 3D printing, and we have a number of different resources that again are still at that point where mainstream education hasn't picked up that every single school has access to these resources. So, Karen, it's been great to enter into a district in which innovation is celebrated and know that that's something that, all the way down to every single student in our classrooms, it's something that they pride themselves on. So, that's the foundation that we're making sure to set a platform for. So I present to you the seven goals essentially that we have brought forward, which is a culmination of hours and hours of focus groups, online survey responses, and also in-person feedback. So the first is about collaboration and communication. We'll go through each one of these goals separately with example projects and initiatives, so you have an idea of what the foundation for each are. Anytime, anywhere, future-ready are rethinking learning space design, community and global connections, online safety, security, and responsibility, unified self-service and support, and digital equity and thinking beyond access. So these are our seven goals. I have one quick side comment for Dr. Sullivan that she'll appreciate. It's going down from 13 goals down to seven was a major effort for us. I say that tongue-in-cheek, but with full respect at the same time. We had a lot that we wanted to do, so she was great in giving us the feedback to think about how we consolidate those efforts. So I'll start first with our goal one, which is around collaboration and communication. The district on average sends about 1.9 million emails internally within a given month, which is a large volume of communications. And what we heard through our focus groups is that individuals are looking for opportunities to engage and collaborate differently than solely just around email. And so, we took that as a call to action to make sure not only is it a way to connect and collaborate, but at the same time, do it in a method that's not through email. So we often will travel, we'll go from location to location. So I presented to you a couple of different options to support the development, implementation, advancement, and ongoing tools that will enable collaboration and communication. So the first one, which you all have had an experience and exposure to, is around our email migration to Office 365. Again, I'd like to call out Carol and her team around a great, amazing, wonderful effort around the migration of our system. We moved 94 million emails within the district within a four-month period of time, and that's about six terabytes of email data. So, now you may think in your home computer you have a terabyte of power, so that's great, we'll just get six computers to do that. Well, we have to maintain years and years and years and years of compliance emails that go back, so that six terabytes is actually much more significant than that amount. And the cost to make sure that that's stable and redundant is also equally as large. So, Carol, your team, as well as desktop support, which Betsy is sitting behind us as well, which Betsy, can you please introduce yourself as well, I apologize?
That's your old desktop support.
Thank you so much, I forgot, Betsy, you're over my left shoulder, a little angel on my wing. I wanted to make sure, because each of our staff members had gone into each of the schools the morning of their migration and provided support to each staff member if they needed it as it was available. So this has been really important as an experience for folks. We're officially off the district for all of our district services in terms of all of our accounts at this point, so it's a massive effort, so just a very nice, great job. Sorry, I just wanted to start a clap and we, that's okay, it failed miserably, so we'll put it on the website.
We're still about the angel on your wing.
Oh, good, okay, that's great, that's great. Our second one is a focus around video conferencing. So we've, we've started a pilot internally around Zoom, which is one of our solutions for video conferencing again, but thinking about how we integrate that into the classroom for future-ready 204, as well as in the world of work and other engagements that CNI is working on. Again, we're finding great experiences with that to reduce travel as well for folks who want to start up a quick conversation with a colleague, that it's not a phone call, or it's not an email, it's actually a face-to-face through, through virtual meeting. Our third is working on Wi-Fi calling on mobile devices. We've heard repeatedly and regularly from our parents, as well as from our teachers and our students, about the ability to make a call within our buildings. And so we're working on the infrastructure to support making calls over Wi-Fi from different carriers. The last one is a personal passion of mine and one that Kathy Pease and Brian Greenstut and I had a chance to meet with one of the founders of that product, is about live transcription and translation. And we have the ability, and actually I've been running it right now, the ability to, I'll pull this up so you can see. We have the ability to live translate into one of 64 languages within a deck that we're doing. So, I thought just as an example, you could see what this looks like to translate into French. Any one of you would have the ability to, on your cell phone devices or portable laptops or devices, to go to that website, translate it with the slash at the end, and pick your own preferred language, and it will translate live to you from English to any language of your preference. The great thing about this is that you can have conversations with each other, not even knowing the own, your own language that you're talking with. So what I'd like to do is just show you a very quick video about what, how this is used in a school district that we actually had a chance to meet while, go to while we were out there. So I'm gonna mute this real quick and get it out of the way for you.
I'm surprised that that can keep up with you.
I know, right? See, it's the one thing that can, right? It's live translate, so I'll go ahead and play this for you. Great.
So there's this app. Whenever you speak. And it's breaking language barriers. You want to transfer an idea to another person. This is Chinook Middle School, and they're speaking with parents like never before.
You've downloaded that Microsoft Translator app. Enable your phone to take a picture of this, this code, and then once you join, you're able to pick your language you'd like to have it speak.
They're trying to break the multi-language barrier by holding a conversation together.
In the bottom of our presentation, the translation just coming over in English.
How does it work? The sound waves are picked up by the microphone.
There was a question, and the library is open during tutorial.
So these parents, speaking nine different languages, can hold one conversation together. They're using Microsoft AI technology, including a machine learning technique based on a form of computing called neural networks, inspired by human brains. Basically, it learns to translate based on real-world speech, not rules programmed in advance. That's Russell, the principal. He said he knows that.
That engaging the parent community leads to better outcomes for our students.
And at this school, they're using tools to bridge that communication gap. It brings voices from abroad and makes us neighbors of people. Have you ever felt a real need to do this? To communicate an idea to someone?
So I wanted to share that with you to think about what's possible. So think about open houses, think about parent-teacher conferences, think about the impromptu discussion. So, at one point, you saw where the principal was having a discussion with a parent. It can actually also speak back in the language of that person, so not just in text, but also in linguistics. So they have 64 different languages. All the recognized languages that we have within the district are within the application as well. So, again, I did this for the purpose of the transcripts, that we could also look at the accuracy and the reliability of that too, but it's a great new opportunity, not only to do in different languages, but also in English as well on screen for students who are trying to also understand what they see on the screen. We can translate that directly from English to English as well, so. And we think there's great possibility and potential. The other piece that we did is, we've also turned on within all the Microsoft apps and also within the Google apps, the ability to live translate material. So what you're looking at right now is a French translation of a slide that you just had previously. That's one click to translate the entire slide. Now, again, it's not going to be the equivalent of a human translator who has spent hours and hours and hours taking your slides, especially, Justin, to your comment, my slides, right? It'll take them a long time to do that. But, in this case, it's a great first pass of a translation when you're trying to break down barriers of language, right? It's a great, great next step. Our second goal, about anytime, anywhere, future-ready, is how do we make sure that we're supporting innovation and development of work for critical thinking with just-in-time access to learning and engagement? Again, that's how do we make sure that resources are available for students and for staff? Our teachers gave us feedback that they wanted to make sure they had the opportunity to disconnect from the desk, the proverbial front of the room. They wanted to be free to move about the country, as you would say on Southwest, but they wanted to be able to go around with their students in their flexible learning environment. And so, what we'll be piloting with teachers is a 360-degree screen that flips out of the, into the clamshell version that you have here, asking for teachers who'd like to try out new technology, where they can be free within their classroom, not docked, and also engage with a screen, students in the room, or other individuals at the same time. Allows them to write on the laptop and also use it as a reading book at the same time. So again, we're trying out new things for staff, that'll be for teachers and for administrative staff as well. The second is about our one-to-one devices for students. As you know, we've used Chromebooks within the district, and we'll continue Chromebooks for elementary. We're evaluating middle school and high school for not this coming academic year, but the following academic year. So, this coming year, as you, as you know, our middle school students are due for a refresh. Those will be Chromebooks and their touchscreen Chromebooks, that'll be refreshed during that time period. Because again, we've had amazing feedback from teachers about the importance of touch within a device. Not necessarily the specific device, but about the fact that touch is an important element for students coming in to use devices. Whether it's for typing, or the ability to just touch something that you need, especially for other applications that they use. I wanted to call out Kent and the network team for their work around our heat map studies, which basically gives us the ability to see every single part of every building that we have within the district and the coverage that's available from Wi-Fi and connectivity. Because often you may get comments that say, there's not enough coverage here, or what's the strength of the signal here? We actually have overlay maps for every single building and every single location, to understand what our strength of signal is and the quality of the connection we can do. So this summer, they have a large effort underway to tweak and fine-tune those elements for the start of school when we come back to that space. And lastly, our industry certifications and competencies. CNI has brought forward a great partnership to discuss and look at, how do we start advancing industry certifications around Adobe, Apple, Autodesk, Microsoft, and other companies? Up to this point, we have an 88% pass on certifications that we've done at this point. Tech Services has completed 60 certifications, and Microsoft Suites for all the technology solutions and products that we use. Again, as I shared with you, one of my big goals for the team was to focus on our professional development efforts and making sure that we start going through the certification process around all the competencies and requirements that they have within their roles. Our third is about rethinking learning space design. You may think that's an interesting topic, based on the fact that it's a technology person sitting in front of you and not someone from curriculum and instruction. But again, they're inextricably linked, and we know that we can't just put a smart board in the classroom and think that that's going to be the magic that brings everything together, or that solely a projector is going to do that. The importance of this element is how we provide options for teachers that best meets the needs to deliver the type of materials that they'd like to deliver. So we'll be creating pilot spaces in which teachers can explore technologies and visit them to see what's the right fit for their needs for their spaces. So it's not, you had a smart board, you have a smart board again. It's what's the right needs for your space, especially as flexible delivery is, is taking place. The other item I'll share on this that we've launched is a code incubator for innovation. So our high school students right now are working on different applications for the district as part of solving challenge problems. So, about Tribe Time is one of the examples that they're, they're building an effort for. We've developed, developed an incubator space through one of our software partners that actually will allow students to build their own applications in a safe playground in which they won't necessarily have the ability to attack the district network, but can break and work on their own application in a sandbox. And also, make sure it's backed up, safe, redundant, and then their student work remains their student work at that point. So, we've had great, great feedback on that too. Community and global connections. This one for us is, we had a clear call to action from parents about how can we help them understand or have more tools or solutions around how to manage technology in their households, but also to bring up competencies around different topics of interest to them. And so, what we're working on are a set of online workshops and training resources for families, as well as in-person events each month that can offer such opportunities. The other one was that parents felt they had way too many logins, which that's one that I think we can all agree with from different services that we have. We have a login for everything. And we're working towards a parent single sign-on. So the ability for parents within the district to have one login and one password to get to all the resources that they need to, to support their child, as well as to engage with the district, which that's a major, that'll be a major milestone, because it's not something that's extremely common across districts. And then, also our engagements with Digital Promise and the League of Innovative Schools with Dr. Sullivan. We're in a number of efforts with Kathy Pease being the largest one, which is around, I'm forgetting the short, the acronym for it, sorry, the one that Brian Chovoden is on? Computational Thinking, right. The computational thinking program as well as others. So again, we have a lot of our hands in other organizations as well, with Microsoft, Adobe, and several other companies that are looking to create internship programs for our students, and also access to different programs for our students, so. We know that online safety, security, and also responsibility are key elements for not only our students, but also our staff and our parents as well. We've been doing our phishing awareness and intervention programs, which you probably have seen at one point or another, whether it's a Twitter email or it's a H&R Block spoof email. And our percentages of responses have gone down, which is amazing. We're down in the teens, rather than being in the 60s in terms of response, which is a major, major growth step within a one-year period. Even to the point where folks now look for the banner before they take any actions with it. And, and we've had feedback from folks that say, I'm starting to think to myself, do I have an H&R Block account? No, this isn't something I need, and deleting it. Where before, it was a, just forward it to our spam account and let somebody else let me know what it is. Folks are taking that step to do so. As you know, we've already submitted the approval for our web filter upgrade and the move to the cloud with that, as well as our firewall replacement. These are our multi-layered solutions to providing safety and security for the district. And I'll have more information at a later time on the firewall replacement and our web filter piece. Our second to the last goal, which is around unified self-service and support, probably the largest that has been part of our board memos for the past few months, as well as feedback from the community, is about our student information system. And we're embarking on that replacement process. So we have our first kickoff focus groups tomorrow with Tech Services, and so we'll start that, and then also begin engaging with the larger community for our teachers, our administrators, our parents, and then also students around that as well. One of the major efforts that our desktop support and desktop services team are working on is self-service software delivery. So today, you would put in a request for a software application to go onto your computer. By fall, that will be you pick the application you'd like, and it will automatically install on your workstation and make that available for you. We want to make sure that again, we're removing barriers to access for resources, especially with that just-in-time access, is that you get what you need when you need it without having a barrier to getting it done. Our students were very, very, very vocal about wanting to print from their Chromebooks or having the ability to print from home. We're excited to say we found our application to be able to do that and provide that. We'll be working over the summer to deliver on that solution. And then in the fall, the start of the first quarter, we'll have that available for students from home and from on-district. But that's in partnership with our teachers and our principals around what does it mean to be a responsible printer and make sure that we're not printing 500-page blank pages, and that it's about how we support academics and instruction at the same time. And the other piece we'll be embarking on is a digital records management effort around how do we begin addressing the discussion of paper? Because paper is everywhere. How do we start getting to a place where we're doing digital records that still is in compliance with state laws, as well as other law requirements, so. And our last piece is about digital equity and thinking beyond access. Oftentimes, you'll hear when talking about digital equity that it's about, you've given someone access to a resource, so that's equitable. Well, it's about much more than that, right? So, we can provide access to district software applications like Adobe and Microsoft. We can, you know, bring a support center which allows you to have access to those resources, but how are we actually giving something to someone that bridges that gap, right? So one of the things we're really, really excited to share with you is that we are now formally accepted to the 1 Million Project. And this is a massive endeavor and opportunity for the district. We started back in December submitting the application and going through several rounds of interviews and completing application portfolios, and how do we use these devices? And the 1 Million Project provides a hotspot device for students that do not have access to the internet, or have sustainable access to the internet. More specifically, most districts are working with their free reduced lunch eligible population, and what it provides is a hotspot to that student, 10 gigs of high-speed internet, and then unlimited access to 2G or non-high-speed internet access. They can be rewarded by practicing for the SAT, Khan Academy, or other academic resources, and earn additional gigs of high-speed internet by participating in that process, all of which is at no cost to the student, no cost to the family, no cost to anyone, including the district. That process is for high school students again, but there's not a cap in the number of students that we can support within that program, which is an amazing opportunity, and it's good for up to four years. So our incoming freshmen have that device from their freshman year all the way until they graduate senior year. Even for our seniors coming in, have it for one. Even for our seniors coming in, have it for one year until they graduate from the district. So we think it's an amazing opportunity to start addressing the homework gap around access to resources, especially as we're investigating other solutions and tools within the district. So again, I just, I appreciate your support in that effort, and we'll be going through device registration that will be starting tomorrow. We'll be sending out notices to our Free Reduced Lunch eligible families, as well as reaching out personally to make sure that they have the information available, and how to participate in the program. So again, we're, we're really thrilled about what this can do, and how this can impact our families. So that is really the last major milestone for us when it comes to the goals that we're looking at. What I wanted to make sure you saw, and there's a lot of information on this screen if you're looking at it on the projection, is how are we holding ourselves accountable as Tech Services about what we're going to do over the next three years? So we don't get super ambitious and do it all in one year, and then years two and three are empty, right? And also make sure that it's sustainable over the time period. You'll find on our website, when we launch this, that these are the initiative sheets with clear action steps that we're going to take over years one, two, and three, for different efforts that support a larger board goal, as well as a larger technology services goal. So you'll look for these to see what are the dependencies on the project, what are we going to deliver in years one, two, or three? But essentially, this is our scorecard. How do we know that we're successful in delivering those resources? So at the upper right-hand corner, how do we know that 90% or higher satisfaction with families that are engaging in the program? Who's responsible for that effort, so that if you have questions, you also know who you can ask directly to? So again, I thank you for this opportunity to share the amazing feedback, but all of this would not have been possible without our teachers, our students, our parents, all the participants in our online focus groups, our surveys, the technology services team, but also Cathy, your support in this process and participation engagement and partnering. So I wanted to, again, say thank you for that. So again, our members of our Tech Services team are here, answer any questions as well. See, left shoulder, remember this time. Will be available for questions after the board meeting as well, if you should have some.
Questions now? Or comments?
I'll say a comment. So thank you for all of your work. It really, truly is amazing, and another wonderful aspect of this district to hear you talk about all the innovation, the creativity, the professional, the professional development, and that One Million Project is fantastic to hear. So thank you for all of the work of your whole team. I think that it's, you know, it's a backbone of the district for the work that everyone does, so truly appreciate it.
Thank you, Laura. Appreciate it.
Others? Mr. Carubus?
You mentioned the One Million Project and how that's cost-neutral to the district. It's fabulous. There's a lot going on here. How is this play into our budget?
So the overall tech plan, we would make sure that we're not bringing solutions to the board that we couldn't deliver with the budget that we currently have. So as one example of that, the Office 365 project offsets about $120,000 of our overall costs by moving that to Office 365 and not maintaining it internally. So we're able to go down the path of an SIS replacement process without coming to the board with a need for additional funding. So anything that we would do that would require additional support would be vetted internally, first with our cabinet, to figure out other, other places that we can save funds before needing to make such a request.
And I look forward to the next school board presentation that is actually done in a foreign language. And then we are looking at the transcribed version with headphones.
Word fridge.
Fabulous stuff. Great work. Thank you.
Mr. Reis? Not only a cost savings, but the headache of maintaining the exchange server. Sorry, I digress.
You just made a friend in Carol.
The question I have is, you know, we had talked about this briefly about two months ago, but, and not to take away these, all the seven goals are equally as important, but what I hear out in the community most often is that online safety, security, responsibility section. And, you know, I would love to see us become a real outside-of-the-box thinker in this area. You know, whether it's partnering with local organizations, or local, local people who are experts in this area. I think this is where we need to educate our parents, and we need to educate our students. And we were, we attended the Screen Ager's movie, and, you know, I took an informal survey of my 15 boys that I mentor, and, and every single one of them sleeps with their phone in their room. I mean, I, I mean, you know, there are some things that we could help, and, and I would love to see us, you know, really go down that path for our community.
And I, one thing I would just call out is, we have amazing experts within our own team as well. And I say "our team," I mean the Indian Prairie staff, right? So we have a number of experts on digital citizenship within the district, but we also have amazing students who have ideas, too, about what digital citizenship is. So in some of my student conversations, they were actually giving us ideas about how, how to talk to them, how to, how students talk to each other about what it means to be a digital citizen. And so one of the things that we're exploring in that process is, how do we think about a curriculum? And Cathy, I'm sorry, I'm speaking about curriculum, but around this space of students talking to students, rather than staff talking to a student, a student-to-student conversation about what that means. So that's, that's a great feedback point, and, you know, as we've talked with principals, it's about how do we engage parents in the Chromebook adventure, right? So how do we make sure that parents have access to understand what's being done on the Chromebook? So one of the pieces in our web filter upgrade that you'll see on that line is piloting a parent report, or a family report of Chromebook usage. And so starting this fall, parents will have the ability to opt into what happened on their student's Chromebook this week, to understand what are the blocked sites that the student tried to access, or searches that their child tried to do, where are they also spending their time on their Chromebook? Because again, what we feel this does is not only have the principal as a partner around making sure that their student, their child is safe online, but also that they can be part of that conversation at the same time. And that was what we were hearing from parents as well.
And I would even go one step further, as, and as an addendum to that, offer resources for parents that, "Hey, here's where you can register your cellphones, your iPads, your video games, to track the usage for all those devices for your family." So now all of a sudden, not only are we helping them maintain our property, which is the Chromebook, but also to manage their, their own home's usage, which leads to other things that we can agree or disagree on, you know, whether it's sleep or anxiety or whatever. So, you know, I, I just, I would love to see us go down that path, but thanks.
Sure. And Mark, one last little nugget I'll throw on that is, as Cathy and I were in the online focus groups, parents were looking for recommendations and suggestions, right? Not solely around, you know, "Where do I put the Chromebook?", or "What do I put on my router for settings to protect the internet?", right? "How do I talk with my child about online safety? How do I talk with them about not having their Chromebook in their room, or their cellphone in their bed?", right? What are some of the conversation starters that go around that place? And so, as you know from the Screen Ager's event, there were a number of parents after that event was over going, "How do I do this? Help me understand." So I agree with your point.
There definitely is, because I've had those conversations. There, there's definitely a right and a wrong way to handle that, because it is what our students have grown up, and it's part of them, right? So there needs to be a smart conversation around that. But thanks for thinking about that.
I did have a question. First, I'm just overwhelmed by everything. It seems like you've covered every single area. You're like, "Oh yeah, that was neat." I mean, it's amazing. You're looking at paper saving. I mean, that's, it's, it's amazing. And the immediacy to get something when you're trying to work with kids and you want it, because it's in today's lesson, it'll work. That's perfect. But the, the million-dollar project, that you mentioned the Screen Ager's, and I'm pretty sure it was there that I heard when we're giving these devices and the technology to our low-income families, that that's where we don't see, we actually see a decline sometimes, because the kids are on the, on, on the devices inappropriately or not usefully. So what, what have you thought about that in this whole implementation?
Great question, Cathy. Thank you. So the hotspot devices that would be provided through the One Million Project are also filtered, separate from the Chromebooks. So they have another layer of filtering that's applied there. And families are part of that conversation when this device, if they choose to participate in the program, about setting what they are establishing as healthy limits. So parents can define between this time and this time, there's no hotspot usage, the hotspot just doesn't work during those times. So again, thinking about, again, the district not forcing a device into their household, but to say, "This is about how can we provide access to a resource that you either don't have right now, or it's not reliable." Again, but making sure that those, those measures are still available for families. You can disable it during these times. But also, Mark, to your comment as well, what are, what are the, the, your family's guidelines and practices and procedures around how you want to handle technology within your family, right? So we can do as many of the things we can with technology, but a student may have another device that goes around that, or has some other technology. It's about that larger conversation about responsibility, and what does that mean within your family?
Right. Great. That's great. Thank you very much.
No worries.
You guys are awesome.
Susan?
We actually, I'm sorry, you actually just answered a question I had about the mobile hotspots, and I just want to make sure, especially from, from seeing Screen Ager's, but we, we recognize that all of our families need to have to be concerned about making those right choices, and, and just because we provide those tools to families who may not be able to access it on their own, they're not the only ones that have challenges around what's right in, in building those parameters. But I think this is, just to echo, I think it's fantastic. Thank you so much for the time that you guys have spent, and I really like the aspect that you have included, looking at the Makerspaces and entire environment, and recognizing that it's not just the, the digital atmosphere, but, but it's the entire environment. So I've seen a number of things around the entire Makerspace environment, so I'm really interested to see as we go through the next few years how we can wrap that around as well. So thank you.
And to one of your points, Susan, that you had made about these devices, making sure that families have access to what we would call professional development, but family resources before these devices are issued. So what does it mean to bring a hotspot into your house? What does it mean to have access to the internet that you may not have had before in your house, right? Also get on some of these conversations about how do you establish recommendations without them being value judgments, right? Because that's a very interesting dichotomy between, "Here's what you should do, and here are options for pathways for you to have a conversation about what it means for your house." Because I think it's a deeply personal conversation, but we want to make sure we respect that relationship to a level where they have recommended or suggested ideas for topics, but they choose what's right for their family, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Grover?
You were talking about the students teaching other students, and I know you had a digital citizenship class, and a few selected students were chosen. Can you talk about how those kids were chosen, and how many kids were there, and then what did they do when they went back to their classrooms? And is it like a one-year, are you going to do that every year, or how often you're going to do that?
I'm going to call, Cathy, or Karen, do you?
Yeah, Cathy, you can help me with, I don't know how, I think the schools selected the kids, but that was a, a program in cooperation with Kids Matter, in terms of, they took a shift this year to have, you know, digital citizenship ambassadors, I think they were called, so leaders that were trained on a day. And I think, Mike, didn't you, you came that day? It was a great, and Mark, you know, it was a great, I think, experience for kids, and really gave them like lessons that they could take back to their schools. And I know I've seen a number of tweets coming out from some of our schools where those students were, you know, doing, then teaching their peers those digital citizenship lessons. So I expect that they're going to do that again next year.
Yeah, Al Davenport was one of the leads on, was the lead for our district on that, and they just met and talked about how to do that again, and then how to expand it a little bit, in partnership with district tools.
And that'll, we covered, you know, the five Cs that we talked about, you know, in education, as far as collaborating and creativity, but it also talked about that responsibility piece, what to look out for, how to advocate for other students. So it was, I was totally impressed with, I mean, and they were all working together as groups in presenting of how they were going to take this back to their school, because they were working with their own teachers. So, yeah, they, like you mentioned earlier, it's, it's when you can have students giving these things, that's even more impactful.
So I was seven, I, I've been out being a principal practitioner for about seven years. I am blown away.
Far behind, aren't you?
In less than a decade, where we have come and gone, and are going to, just blows me away. So I want to thank your entire team for bringing this district to where it's at. A few things I want to, I want to focus on. One of them is the focus groups. Being a principal practitioner in the district, I still have a few friends in the district.
They still talk to you?
Yeah, once in a while.
Just checking.
They talk to me about the focus groups, and then what they talk to me about is they really appreciated that the central office took time and effort to meet with that. Sometimes district initiatives are done, no offense, in isolation, not this one. You guys really did a great job in terms of meeting with several different groups to get input, and I think it's reflected in this plan. I, I think it's a comprehensive plan, so I appreciate everything that's done with the focus groups. I really like, and to me, it's a bit innovative, that we're not only concerned about our students, that we're concerned about our families and parents. Again, I feel we're in a train. Won't need training. Right now, we have parents who need training, as well as the board president who needs training on how to work through all this. And I think that part is smart and innovative and forward-thinking, and I, I appreciate that we're doing that, and I think that, that's a great effort. The digital equity is superb. Board has been talking about gaps, and there has been a digital divide, and could be a digital divide, we're closing that gap, and I think that's really important. You have evidence of a well-articulated accountability system. I think that makes sense, and I appreciate that, and I know this board and future boards will appreciate keeping the scorecard with you in terms of how we're progressing. And I know the community says, "How do you know?" Right here, this is how we know. Being a principal practitioner, I love that kids will be able to print. My guess is, we won't be saving paper right away, and that will take some time to help students and/or teachers figure out what we can print, what we should print, but I think it's a good addition. So I want to thank everyone, the entire team, for all the great work that you do. Anything else?
I do want to give Adam a shout-out on the One Million Project, though, because you were the one who really actively pursued that, and went through all the interviews, et cetera, and really pursued that for us. So I do want the board to know and acknowledge your work on that project, because I think that's really important for our families.
Thank you so much.
Mike, one quick closing for you. If you want to have tech support or guidance on the tech plan, I can bring you up to speed if you join Team IPEF. You're guaranteed to get a
I will join it.
Training session during the run.
You will have to.
Your task is much bigger.
Yeah, you, me walking three miles won't be what it will take to train me in terms of technology.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Our next action item is evidence-based funding, spending recommendations.
Whoops. Sorry. Nope. Okay, I just went blank on the password. Nope.
We talked about barriers.
Oh my gosh. I am so sorry.
There you go.
Do you guys remember this?
Just had a technology.
I think I got it.
We only had that single sign.
There it is. There we go.
All right. Good evening, board members.
Okay, I just went blank on the password. Nope.
He talks about barriers.
Oh my gosh. I am so sorry.
There you go. Just had a technology.
Oh, here, I think I got it.
We only had that single sign.
There we go.
All right. Good evening, board members. We're excited to talk to you tonight about the plans for the evidence-based funding. We are happy to share the plan with you. Feel free to ask questions as we go through, if something comes up as we go through this. So this evidence-based funding plan relates to Board Goal One specifically and how we help students grow social, emotionally, and academically. As Mr. Strang has shared with you multiple times in his budget forecasts, we've been talking at the superintendent's cabinet about how we could utilize our evidence-based funds. We reviewed the Engage 204 recommendations for different academic programs, talking about teacher training, student wellness, and class sizes. Those were some of the top ones. And then also looking at, at research on class size and instructional coaching and how perhaps that could impact us. So this slide you have seen before. This are the evidence-based funding elements, part of the list, that the Illinois State Board of Education has provided with us and said that your evidence-based funds need to be allocate, dedicated to some of these types of activities or staff. You've also seen this slide before in the budget presentations and we just wanted to share it with you again so that we can remember that while we're very excited to be able to have some evidence-based funds to, to spend and had to think about how to spend some of that money. We're not used to spending money, but we were excited to be able to think about that problem. We are still short as a Tier Two district in what the state would say that we need in order to put these, all of these elements in place. So this is a small start, but an exciting one. So what we would like to do is to start looking at class size reduction and looking that at our Title I schools. As you remember, five of our elementary schools have a higher percentage of low-income students than some of our other schools. Calhoun, Longwood, McCarty, Georgetown, and Gombert. And we would like to reduce class size maximums at the lower grades, kindergarten and first grade, so that we would have a maximum of 23 students. Currently at kindergarten, it's 27. So that's quite a, quite a reduction and exciting. We also would like to reduce class size maximums by two or to 29 students in grades two to five. We know that in our Title I schools, not all of our students start in kindergarten and first grade and follow all the way up. And so some of the kiddos that are in third, fourth, and fifth grade haven't been with us in those early primary grades. And so having smaller class sizes, although not as small as we do at the primary levels, but having smaller class sizes will help us reach some more of those students. But most importantly, we know from research that unless we change what's happening in the class, just reducing how many kids are there isn't going to have the impact that we wanted to have. So we would also like to add instructional coaches and focus them on literacy in grades kindergarten and, and first grade. So that would be a total additional F T E of 17 teachers and then six F T E for instructional coaches.
The significant educational work of John Hattie as well as other respected educational leaders certainly provides research and evidence of effectiveness that supports instructional coaches as an opportunity for continuous educational growth in classrooms. So this plan adds instructional coaches that are six Title I buildings. Those coaches would focus on balanced literacy instruction and practices in the primary grades. Of those six coaches, two of the coaches would be allocated to Calhoun Elementary with one coach each to the following four schools respectively, Longwood, Georgetown, McCarty, and Gombert. With the addition of these instructional coaches, professional learning would need to take place and we would focus on two components for that professional learning. The first being a content component where we would place an emphasis on the balanced literacy skills and strategies that we would want to focus on in terms of enhancing and refining the instruction that is already taking place. The second component would be a component that focuses on the instructional coaching effectiveness in and of itself. And that would include some additional foundational work as well as some embedded ongoing professional development as we move forward. We have begun some initial communication with the Jim Knight Group for potential teaming for these efforts. Tandemly, we would collect some data throughout the process if we move forward with the plan and that would be three separate areas of data collection. The first being a classroom time study. This would allow us to track the increased opportunity to successfully include all components of balanced literacy on a daily and weekly basis for students, including increased opportunities for small group instruction with students and one-on-one student conferencing or instruction, knowing and guiding our readers in, in stronger ways. The academic data that we would collect would be our AIMS Web Plus rate of improvement data. So as we would progress, monitor our students, that rate of improvement would provide a, the data that's linked towards the students making gains towards identified goals. Our third portion of data would be linked to behavior. And this, our goal would be that we would be able to track the positive behavior increase that would be based on the implementation of the elements of the proposed plan.
And the last support would be in the area of mental health. And the first support would be continuing the work that was started this year with adding support at the elementary level. And we would propose adding 1.5 mental health staff. And then the second would be at the high school and middle school levels by adding a title of mental health coordinator. One would be at each high school. And then also assist the feeder schools for those students who have had mental health issues, either being serviced by District 204 staff or outside providers or those who have had a break in their educational experience because of mental health reasons. And just kind of tracking that, making sure they're transitioned back into the school environment if they've had a break, it goes smoothly. And then for those middle school students to aid them in their transition into the high school.
So we are excited to be able to move forward with this and share this with you and we'll answer any questions that you might have.
Data that you're going to collect is at, just at the five Title I schools? Okay. For all the kids at the school or?
So the combination of data would be, our focus for coaching initially would be with our primary grades. So the coaches would work most closely with those primary teachers. So that classroom time study would be an opportunity particularly for each of those classroom teachers at the primary grades to report data. So that would be more of like the use of instructional time during their day. The, the student data, the AIMS Web data, we would take that from every classroom. We already collect that, so we would be able to examine that rate of improvement to, to measure the gains, the additional gains that would likely take place. And then the behavioral data would, would come from those impacted classrooms as well.
Can you talk a bit about, and so I applaud adding more teachers in these schools and addressing this at the elementary level, like getting more staff to help because I do think that is the start of helping kids move in the right direction. But can you talk about capacity at these schools for adding these teachers and staff?
Yeah, that, that's a struggle. Two of our schools, Calhoun and Longwood, will, in order to make this happen, will need to use art and music rooms as classrooms. And we'll also have to use some other spaces and be creative about that, perhaps some space in the L M C because these Title I schools tend to have more support staff. ELL teachers, special ed teachers, assistants, that kind of thing. And so we'll need spaces for that. I've walked the buildings with all the principals and we've figured out what we can do to make it work. And the principals, particularly at Calhoun and Longwood, feel very strongly that they can figure it out because the benefits for the kids at those buildings is, is, is great.
Calhoun is much bigger than the other ones, right? That's why people might look at this and question, why is there two at that school and one at the other?
It is. There'll be 10, 10, 10 sections, I think, almost double of the, the number of sections in kindergarten and first grade. I don't have that off the top of my head, but almost double the sections as, at some of the other schools. So that's why we opted for two coaches there.
Other questions? Ms. Demy?
So knowing how the investment, and I have forgotten to ask you this, knowing the investment that we make in the arts, what will happen at the schools where we're going to need to use classroom space to our art and music initiatives at those schools?
Well, unfortunately, in 204, we've used, we've had to use art and music rooms regularly, relatively. And so we do art and music on a cart.
Okay.
And those teachers put their supplies on a cart and they go into the classroom to provide services. The teachers in the past, when I was a building principal, we had art and music on a cart for a number of years. And the teachers learned how to deliver the curriculum and we work hard not to make changes. You know, we still do the dance unit and, and those kinds of things. The messy projects, we put plastic down so we, in the classroom, so that it doesn't have the tile floor and that kind of stuff.
So parents and, so parents and teachers don't have to fear that they're going to lose art and music. We provide in other ways.
We provide it in other ways, exactly.
And I think it's, I, I think it's so critical in talking to a couple of kindergarten teachers that have students that they found as the year went on, maybe needed to have additional supports that weren't necessarily part of our preschool program. So the identification and need for additional supports, potentially I Ps, was done a little later in the year. And so that ability, those students coming in that haven't had an opportunity to be involved in a classroom environment, it, it takes a lot out of, out of those students, which means it'd take a lot of the teachers and the other students as well. So I, I think it's just, I, I really applaud us taking a look at being able to do this at such a young age because I think it will positively really impact everybody at that age level. Quick question on the identification of supports that are needed. How, when do we, when, when will we look at being able to do those types of assessments so that students and families that need additional supports when they're in kindergarten, if they haven't been through our preschool program? When do those occur so that they can begin taking advantage of support?
Well, the problem-solving processes that we already have in place in our buildings will continue. I think our hope in, in providing the literacy coach and in kindergarten particularly is that a teacher is going to get to know those students. We're going to especially train them for some, to use some assessment tools. So they're going to know quicker how students are and if they're making progress, we're going to be able to know that.
I would, I would agree that we, we have, it will increase our opportunity to take a look at what students have been exposed to in terms of print knowledge, vocabulary. I will be able to take a closer look at what they're interested in for some of those early childhood readers. It's really kind of important to make sure we can hook them in and tailor some of that initial print and book exposure to what it is that they're interested in. This will allow us to know that better. And then building on that, their comprehension. So, so those would be the areas that we would absolutely target with those early readers. But our, our assessment is really ongoing in kindergarten and not just limited to those, those benchmark opportunities. That rate of improvement that we, we referenced would be specifically for ongoing progress monitoring that would happen. And that's usually a result of us getting to know kids better early on.
Others? Ms. Grover.
So I'm trying to figure out with the other elementary schools where you test the kids with AIMS Web and put in resources. So if you're focusing on the Title I schools and you have instructional coaches there, and I thought I read somewhere with the new curriculum, if you are in kindergarten through third grade, but you are one reading level below, you're going to get 60 minutes of reading. Would we be able to use instructional coaches in those elementary schools as well? Or are they just focused on Title I schools? Because what about the other kids in the other elementary schools?
Sure. This is a, this is a first step. Remember that chart? Let's put that chart back up about how far away we are from adequacy. This is the, this is the, this is the amount of money that Jay has said we've got. And so we really had to look at, because if we could do this for every school, we would be doing this for every school. So I was looking at if we've got this amount of money, where can we get the biggest bang for our buck? Where do we want to start first? And I think depending upon what success we see would be as we continue and hopefully the state continues to fund us and hopefully we don't have mandates that take our money, which we're going to talk about. Then that will help us make recommendations about what we'd like to see across. Because we would like to be able to reduce class sizes across the entire district, but we just don't have the funds to do that. So this is why this took us, you know, one, we're not used to having money to spend, correct? So we're not, we're out of the habit of doing that. We're much more adept at cutting. And, but, but two, this is why it took us so long, I think, to bring this to you all is we really spent a lot of time talking about where is the best place to put these limited dollars? And we don't have enough to do everything that we would like to do. We had a really long laundry list. And this is where we landed, where we thought the research was there to support it and what we could do across those title schools. Feel free to add.
Ms. Rising?
Yeah, so I just wanted to kind of summarize some of that too, because what is today's date? April 8th? Less than one year ago, May 21st, 2018, Engage 204 came to the board with their recommendations. First recommendation was reduce class size. We knew we couldn't do that across the district because it would cost us $16 million. Administration's recommendation at that time was to look at the schools, particularly the elementaries, with a high percentage of low income. We've done exactly that. So we've done exactly what we said to the community we would do with limited resources. And we're making it happen and we've committed to it. Not only that, we, the fourth goal of the recommendations from Engage 204 was that we hire additional staff and focus on mental health. We're committing to that as well. Not to the level I think any of us would like, but to the levels and the areas where we think it's most important and to monitor some of that activity. So I'm extremely thankful to this board, to the Engage 204, to administrators for making this happen, for Jay finding the money. And, you know, like we'd mentioned a year ago, you know, we need to keep chipping away at this stuff, chipping away when we can. And, you know, we'll see the results. But the only other thing that I would add to it on the mental health side is, you know, with the, with the coordinators that we're looking at is that having had two kids that have made the transition from middle school to high school, to me, that's the most important area that we kind of look at and, and kind of monitor and oversee. And, you know, I, I just hope that focus is there with that coordinator. And I know they're going to have their hands full and be spread pretty thin. But, you know, I'm sure they're going to do a great job and come back with some wonderful recommendations as well. So, thank you guys.
Ms. Peel?
Oh, man. I am so excited. I, I'm like, you keep telling us instructional coaches are the best practice. When are we going to start doing that? So, wow, I'm so excited. And, you know, I've been working with five overcrowded kindergarten classes this year. 23 is almost too much, but wait, what a, what a relief that is. And you can work with smaller groups in a more effective way. This is incredible stuff. And I think we're looking at equity in this district. And if there's an equity step we could have taken, it's this one. And I would say a few years back, probably several, several years back, I remember talking about what about just at least looking at Title I schools? And there was worrisome that they would be criticized, that you're not doing it for everybody. But in an equity lens, this is the way to do it. And I, I do think when you bring that, those kids that have been struggling up, you're bringing the whole district up. So it's, it's, it, it is equitable for everybody and I am so excited. And I know you guys are going to do such a great job. And when you, and you know, I know you said the coordinators, maybe it's not, you know, enough. But when you relieve the one person and you take the rest of the staff, that all of a sudden they have a little more time to, to do their job well. I think we're going to see some, some big benefit there too. So I don't think it's, it's a small step to put those coordinators in place. I'm very excited.
Ms. Carubis?
I support the recommendation. I applaud the cabinet with coming forward with a plan that both put funds to maintain the buildings and found a way to decrease the class. and found a way to decrease the class size. I think there was, there needed to be a balancing act to that and I liked it. We talked about the equity issue briefly. Tell me, does this disproportionately impact low-income Hispanics and blacks?
It, it does, because that's the place that we need to start. Research, the class size research shows us that that's the place to start. If you're going to have a, a difference in low class sizes, that you do it in areas where there is low income. That's the schools that have been researched. And so, our Title I schools by definition are, have more low-income students and tend to have more minority students as well, Hispanics, African-Americans, more multiple languages and those kinds of things. So it does, but that is also where the need is and that is also what research tells us will be effective.
Yeah, and so I look at, I looked in through some of the data. District average for Two Oh Four for free and reduced lunch is seventeen percent. And Georgetown is sixty-one percent. The average percentage black population is nine, Gomberd is fifteen. Hispanic average is twelve, Georgetown is forty-seven. ELL, the average is ten percent, in Georgetown, it's thirty-four percent. So you can see how spending funds here has a greater impact at, in these populations. We have to look at it through an equity lens, but then you also have to balance the capacity issue. At some point, we, you can't put more funds in teachers at these facilities because you only have so many rooms. And then that brings us back to redistricting. And, and any equity plan, I think, has to balance, like we were talking about it. It does need to apply to other schools as well. If we just apply additional funds to just these buildings, then that is not equitable as well. So we've got a lot of different variables to consider when we go through this. But definitely support the recommendation, great work.
Well, and I, and I think when you talk about equity, you look at, you know, making sure that you're bringing the levels. And you pointed to, you gave the percentages, full percentages of, of students of, of color in low economics in those schools. But if we took a look, and I'm certain you did, took a look at the, those success levels and those achievement levels, trying to bring those schools up to the same level as some of other schools, I would assume you chose those not only because Title I, but because some of those academic success levels aren't where some of our other schools are. So if you're bringing those schools up, that's where, that's what equity is, is, is making sure that everyone's, comes up to that same level playing field. But certainly, we want to be able to, as we go forward, starting where the needs greatest, but then being able to certainly move over to our other schools. Because our, you know, we, we, we see needs in, in all of our.
So you know how there's this guy at, at every party? That's kind of the downer? Here I am.
Can we turn off his mic?
I can do it this way, that I was just in Springfield and there's current legislation, Senate Bill eleven eighty-nine and House Bill twenty-two thirty-four that is calling for more stringent school district physical education. It would double, well, from three days to five days. I asked Dr. Sullivan to do an analysis of what that would mean for the district. It would mean the addition of twenty-one physical education teachers. It would mean that physical education would have minutes where reading, language arts, math would not. It would take away elective courses perhaps from the high school.
And the middle school.
And the middle school. And it would cost the district annually about one point four million dollars. I was lucky enough to go down to Springfield to do some lobbying. The response I got back from several of the legislators was, this is a bill that we're getting a lot of pressure to pass. And I lobbied our local administrators, I mean, local legislators. And you could, they agree in principle with what I'm talking about, that perhaps lowering class size and giving additional money to title schools is where evidence-based funding should go and not to the addition of physical education. And let me be clear, I love physical education. This district has blue ribbon, physical education in its schools. And I want to maintain excellent physical education, but not at the risk of helping my Title I schools and having that money diverted. Now, this law, if passed, probably wouldn't start to the twenty-twenty-one school year. But I am worried after talking to several legislators about the pressure that they're feeling. I know Dr. Sullivan has written those legislators. I think we need to publish that letter to our parents. And we have to consider maybe a call of action to our parents to indicate what their desire is. Now, I'm not going to tell parents what their desire should be. But I do know that Engage Two Oh Four, the number one recommendation was to reduce class size. And so, I think it puts that recommendation in jeopardy. Would I be correct if this bill passes, what happens to this wonderful plan?
Well, you're correct. And I think the one point four million you were referring to was really elementary only. It wasn't just the impact beyond at middle and high school potentially. So this is, you know, one of our own legislators' bills. This is Senator Holmes' bill. She is the person that I sent the letter to, but we did copy all of our other representatives and senators. Some of our local legislators are definitely opposed to it, but I think it was important for them to know what the implications are, the specifics about Indian Prairie. So this puts, you know, the whole thing that we, we think this, our plan that we're presenting to you is exactly what our legislators intended with the evidence-based funding model, not, you know, what we'll have to do with a state mandate that's in these bills.
And I do want to comment on that, but I don't feel like this discussion item is, right now, the place to do it. Like, I'd rather have it during the, the board update. But, yeah, totally agree.
Karen, you mentioned something in your letter that there's no other mandate that suggests the number of type of teachers to be given to our, our schools.
Well, as Mike, as Mike said, there's no, there's no other subject that has a minute mandate. This would be the only subject then that would have a minute and a daily requirement.
And Mark, I, and I know we have good relationship. I, I brought this up here because here we have something that we fought for and the entire state fought for. And this is, was evidence-based funding, which finally, we got a little bit more money to do something with. And as you said, are following the recommendations of our community. And here we are, perhaps in jeopardy. So we can talk about it in the board update also, but this is, this is, this is all, this great plan. Let me be, let me be the fun guy at the party, this is a great plan. This is wonderful, this is what we're supposed to do, as Mark said, this is what our community wants us to do. But there's always something that goes with this.
Well, it's just sad because here we are, a two-tiered, a tier-two district that is putting together a great plan and addressing some of, not only our main concerns as a district, but our community's main concerns. And what's being proposed is not only going to impact this plan, but it's going to impact the whole educational system of our whole district. This is going to have a major impact.
Well, it's space, it's everything else. And everyone I talked to, I was with seven other school districts, they all have the same concern. But the legislators were clear, they're feeling pressure.
Who are they, who are they feeling pressure from?
I, they would not, and I know you talked to a legislator recently, and they're not indicating where that's coming from.
Because the communities are aware of what the issue, I mean, everybody likes the sound of more outside gym or, you know, running around is more healthy. And so, conceptually, it sounds like an attractive thing until you really look at what they're asking for here. And it's like, if people know that, I don't think communities would be pressing them to pass this, this bill.
What needs, it, it's all the messaging, right? So the messaging is, it's a great message they have, make our kids more healthy. Okay, great message, that's all they're saying. Now, let's respond with our messaging. Yes, we believe in keeping our kids healthy. However, this is what this means to school districts. Reduced electives, reduced music and art involvement, reduced, you know, instructional reading. I mean, this is the ramifications of this. While we all believe in physical education, this is what our students get, you know, let's, it's, it all comes down to the messaging. And, and I think that's what's getting lost because whoever's, the ones lobbying for this in Springfield are just saying that our kids need to be more healthy. But they're not telling the negative side of how it's going to impact education.
Maybe I can end this discussion on a good note. When we talked about the Two Oh Four goals and the things that came out of the Engage process and lowering class size, actually, this is the second year that we had essentially more KUP staff while we were reduced in the number of children in the district. So in essence, this is the second planned year for making our ratio better.
Yes.
So can I, is the board okay with Karen sharing this information with the public? I mean, we already have, but it does a lot of.
I would think we need to be more strong of what, yeah, of what it, how it's going to impact the education of our students.
And I think this is an area, and I'm not sure where IASB, what, if, if they, and I, I know they've been speaking. But, you know, this is, this is an area, you know, we've been talking about, you know, nationally, the equity conversation is so, it's just, it's been one that's been at the forefront and certainly in our state. And so, when you see things that can, and I can't speak for all schools, but certainly, you know, we can talk with our legislators about the impact on, on, in our situation. And this certainly has an impact when we're trying to, to provide equitable solutions to academic success for our students.
I think, Mike, you talked about the seven other schools that were on par with you, can we get them involved and?
Oh, they're, everybody.
Write a letter or?
They're all, they're all involved, I know. Did you?
We, I'm, I've been in discussions with a couple of other districts. We'll have, we believe, I'll have a joint letter from other districts that'll go out tomorrow to the legislators. Lend has been on this, Luda, the Large Unit District Association is on this. I know the alliance is in opposition of this bill as well.
Can I ask you the, the, can I ask you the feelings of the other districts that are in the lead sponsor of this bills? What is, what is their feelings on this?
They're, they are in a similar situation where they would like to spend their evidence-based funding on other things. And they're certainly in more need than we are.
So the only thing that's going to turn this around is public outcry, essentially, and public opinion. At the state, at the state level, I mean, all, from all districts, I mean, yeah. Well, maybe this is one of those areas we take a big lead in.
So that was a yes for me.
I think we got a yes. And I think we ask our parents to write.
I think a call.
And I think we have to share this with our PTA presidents and our IPPC leadership in order to get this going.
And some of our parental group, some of our parental, other parental groups would be strongly.
Is this going to, could be called on the floor?
Nobody knows for sure, they thought it possibly could be called in the House this week.
So we need to jump on.
I mean, it's gotten out of committee in both, House and the Senate, so it could be called anytime.
Yep.
Sorry, thank you guys.
Thank you. We'll delay Doug.
Thank you.
You gave out goodies.
No, there's, we still, thank you for staying.
Oh, my goodness.
Well, two tough presentations to follow.
You're up to the task.
I am up to the task. So, thank you for allowing me to have some of your time this evening. Some of you had asked, and yes, guest teacher is some terminology that we heard is more preferred to use than substitute teacher. And so, we're trying to change that terminology in the district and refer to our, what we formerly called substitute teachers as guest teachers. As well as Board Policy five thirty-five, one hundred and five, two twenty, we, this directly coincides with Board Goal Two and our equity efforts. This actually stemmed from the work of the Delt Committee, which is our district equity leadership team. We have a, a group up there that focuses on professional development. And so, as we continue to look at cultural proficiency and the things that we're doing there, we looked at how can we continue our efforts to make sure that all staff in the district is, has that professional development that we feel is critical. You probably remember that over the summer, I came to you and approached you about substitute pay. At that time, we were lower than all other districts near us at ninety dollars a day. At that meeting, we approved to go to a hundred dollars per day, which put us ahead of one of those districts. And we kind of sat there at, still near the bottom with everybody and trailing some people. They all had different incentives where substitutes could make more than a hundred dollars a day. So with the Guest Teacher Academy, we were looking for an opportunity to provide critical professional learning to our guest teachers and guest teaching assistants to limit or negate the potential negative impact on the learning environment when teachers need to be absent. On any given day, we have about seven percent of our teachers in the district absent. That's spread out across the entire school year, which is about a hundred and fifty teachers on any given day. We also wanted to recognize the hard work of our dedicated guest teachers and guest teaching assistants and hopefully motivate them to return to our district as much as we need them. As I had stated at that time, many of the guest teachers that we have in the district or substitutes, we share them with other school districts. Many of them are, sign up to substitute in many different districts. One that guarantees them work almost on a regular basis, but it also gives them the opportunity to kind of pick and choose. And oftentimes, it is a lot easier to choose a district that pays more than other districts. So that was in our mind at the same time. So we kind of had that guiding question, how do we continue our efforts to ensure that student diversity is understood and appreciated by all adults in our buildings? And we had to try to find ways, how can we do that with our guest teachers? We also wanted to look at how can we minimize the impact of a teacher absence on student learning? How do we ensure that student safety will be guided with the same level of confidence even when their teacher's absent? How do we properly train guest teachers and guest teaching assistants and encourage them to work more in our district? And how can we increase our pool of guest teachers? We do feel like providing this Guest Teacher Academy is an innovative approach. But at the same time, we were concerned about, do we train people? And then they never work in our district because they're going to go to another district to. And then they never work in our district because they're gonna go to another district to work, um, especially with how many we're sharing. Um, the areas that we felt we needed to identify as uh, for professional learning, are equity and cultural proficiency. Um, we refer to the next one as Guest Teacher TA one oh one, which is kind of basic expectations, classroom management differentiation, de-escalation techniques. Uh, we know that safety is an area, we wanna make sure that all of our uh, teachers who are taking over for other teachers um, have that same confidence uh, when they're guiding students through safety procedures. Uh, and then technology has been a huge one. Um, as we've moved to uh, one-to-one in the district, um, oftentimes, um, the, uh, our teachers would love to leave plans that still incorporate technology in some, some of those lessons. Um, but many, both substitutes feel like they may not be prepared to do so. And a lot of times, our teachers are unsure if the substitutes are gonna be uh, able to continue that process. Sorry, guest teachers. Gotta get there. Um, so we have some, some areas under technology there. Um, we looked at what this academy could look like. Um, I had passed out to you a flyer that was created by our team. Um, and uh, um, and I, I think a great work in looking at a logo that was provided through the Communication Department. Um, but on there, we talked about two dates, June twentieth and Ju- July twenty-third is our first two dates uh, where we can offer these sessions. Um, this was, is just kind of a sample where they would go through equity and culture proficiency, um, Guest Teacher one oh one, safety, then we would have a break in the middle of the day. And then the afternoon would be focused on technology. We see that in the morning is when we would also have guest teaching assistants there. Um, and then in the afternoon would be focused more for the guest teachers who would be leading um, our, our students through technology. But we have three different areas that we would focus on for the technology. So, as uh, provided to you, when would we train them? We looked at June twentieth and Ju- July twenty-third. And then we looked at two evenings um, during each semester, uh, as you see in October and then February. We didn't wanna pick a day during the year because then if we have people coming during that day, we would not have them available to um, uh, be there for teachers during that school day. So, we kinda split that and did uh, two evenings. Um, one of them would be focused on that first half of the day, and the other evening would be focused on the technology. And then we would do that again in February. Uh, so how we focused on this, our, um, now we train them, how do we keep them? All guest teachers that attend the Guest Teacher Academy will be recognized for attending and be financially recognized with ten dollars more per day. So, if they go through and do these trainings, instead of making a hundred dollars a day, they would make a hundred and ten dollars a day. Um, and our uh, guest teachers who work as teaching assistants are actually paid by the hour. They're at ten seventy-five. Um, and if they go through this training, we would pay them at eleven seventy-five um, per hour. We um, had hoped that if we trained them and then pay more, that would um, cause them to um, work more in our district, knowing that they'll make more per day. Um, we also kind of see it as a, a bit of a badge of honor, um, if they've gone through those trainings. Budget-wise, uh, the cost to do a day of training is, currently, that rate is a hundred dollars. And then each, each of the guest teachers that attends uh, Guest Teacher Academy will receive the extra ten dollars per day, so it'd be a hundred and ten instead of a hundred dollars a day. Um, a half-day of training for our guest teaching assistants, uh, that's thirty-seven sixty-three 'cause that's three and a half hours at ten seventy-five uh, per hour. And then, what I calculated here would actually be one dollar more per hour, which is ten seventy-five to eleven seventy-five, but this is based on a daily rate. It would go from seventy-five twenty-five to eighty-two twenty-five. Uh, so the total financial maximum impact, and I say maximum impact because we do not know how many will actually go through the trainings. Um, and so, we're uh, taking a good guess at what that uh, maximum would be, and then calculating that by about the number of times that we need substitutes throughout the school year. Uh, that we came to three hundred and fifteen thousand. We do have that accounted for in the budget for next year.
So, what is your guess on how many would go to this?
Um, I think a lot will because they wanna be making a hundred and ten dollars a day. Um, and I think our incentive uh, will drive a lot of them. Many of them also want the professional development. They um, you know, they wanna know more about technology. They wanna know more about um, equity and diversity. Um, they want the training. Um, and so, I think this is a unique op- opportunity uh, where they're compensated for it and then compensated in a different way, um, that we're gonna increase their pay for doing that. It's not mandatory, um, and so, um, right now, it is optional. We're um, hoping, um, we get to a point where all of our substitutes do have that training.
Okay, but so how many did you assume to calculate this?
Sure. Um, so on here, um, one of the calculations was we needed, in seventeen eighteen, we needed sev- uh, twenty-five thousand substitutes approximately throughout the year for teachers. Um, and so, I calculated at ten dollars uh, per day on that to be two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, and then, we had far less um, calculated for our teaching assistants. So, I calculated that increase at thirty-five thousand for the year with the dollar more per hour. Um, so that came out to two hundred and eighty-five thousand. And then I built in thirty thousand for the actual day of training. Um, and that would be for trainings possibly throughout the year, um, by the total number of people.
So, little known fact, I'm actually a certified uh, substitute teacher. But uh-
You're, yeah.
I know, I'm actually licensed currently. Um, so, my question for you is, is that, I love the fact that we're doing a training in order for them to get more per hour. I, I think that's a great return on investment. When I was looking at substitute jobs, though, what I was running into is that other districts close by have what's called their preferred subs. You can't even get those positions if you want to. So, I, I guess my question is, is that it's wonderful that we're giving them this professional development, but I also think the substitutes want to have that assurance that, you know, if um, STEC is looking for a substitute, they know that they're on that shortlist of that sub, those subs that they're definitely gonna look at for STEC because they've already have built-in relationships there. So, I guess, have you thought about uh, even taking that one step further as far as getting some preferred subs in place by building or that type of thing?
We've tried to look at that, I think you're probably referring to more of a permanent substitutes at buildings. Um, some school districts do that. Um, we, we've looked at that, um, you know, there's all different challenges um, you face with that and how many days they're gonna work during a year and accruing tenure and all those different types of things. Um, I think one of the questions was, how can, will they have a first priority on the list? Um, we're trying to look at if um, our system can do that because that's a big part of it, is the technology we're working with. Um, can we identify in there who preferred subs are so that they get positions first? Um, it's something we're looking into. We hope we get to a point where all of our um, uh, guest teachers and guest teaching assistants, though, do have that training. I hope I answered your question there.
Yeah, I mean, just the fact that we're considering looking at some of those things, I, I, I like that idea, so, yeah.
I, I'd just like to say, what, one of the things that struck me when I was looking through this was, um, I think for so long, people have just assumed, oh, you got a sub, you're, you're not gonna get a quality education that day. Um, and it was kind of accepted that you've got the sub day. Um, but the training and appreciating that the teachers, you know, subs don't want to walk into a classroom and not have a plan and not be able to do that. I'm sorry, guest teachers, um, don't wanna do that. It is, you know, they're doing it for a reason, and it's not just to get a hundred dollars a day. It's because they like to be with kids and they wanna teach. And so, I think that addresses a lot. And it says a lot about our culture that, that, yeah, we really do want you to be um, adding. It's not really um, filling in.
Right. I think it is a value, added um, approach in this situation. Cause a lot of times, people do refer to it as lost days. One of the things we heard from one of the teachers too is that, um, if, depending on what technology they're using in classroom, some of them, you know, depending on where they're at day, might also be involved in some way um, through the class or be able to do some communication that way, um, if the substitute's familiar with the technology, so.
I, I, I actually remember walking into a classroom where everything was on the laptop, um, but I was given no access to it. And um, every student had a ball to bounce on too, so that was a fun sub day. So, I really, really appreciate this.
I think it's value-added for the um, guest teachers, but value-added also for our students in our buildings. For, to help ensure that that level of training um, is, is provided and that hopefully, you know, the guest teachers coming in, the teachers can feel comfortable in providing a sort of a continuation, more of a continuation for the classroom environment than in the past.
Thank you. And I do feel we still need to improve on our fill rate for substitutes. Um, when I approached you over the summer, uh, if you remember last year, we were below ninety percent on our fill rate. We are trending right now at ninety-one point four percent for the year, um, which is better. But obviously, there's room for improvement, and I think um, this will help us, both from um, our guest teachers knowing um, how much we value them and feel that they're part of our community, um, but also the, I think the additional uh, amount per day will help that as well.
I have a general question regarding guest teachers. Um, how does it work? Do you specifically, like I know for teachers, you have an elementary certificate and you teach elementary. With guest teaching, how does it work? Can you teach any level?
There's all different um, types of licensure. Uh, you might have a substitute license or you have your professional educator license. So, you might have ones that are qualified to be teachers, but maybe they don't have a regular um, licensed teaching position, so they're substituting. So, you might have those, and then you also have ones um, that can only substitute for teaching assistant positions or paraprofessional positions. And so, um, um, for any of our teaching positions, it could be a substitute license or a teaching license that substitutes for the classroom teacher. Now, we have um, guest teachers that come in to fill in for um, leaves of absence that might be for like maternity leaves. They might be um, you know, twelve weeks long. Um, on those ones, we've, in the past, referred to them as long-term substitutes. And in there, we do the best we can to make sure, they all have a teaching license, um, so they're not operating just on a sub-license in that long-term capacity. Um, but we, we do our best to ensure that they are actually licensed in that area that they're covering. So, for instance, if they're covering for a high school math teacher, we, we want um, a licensed teacher who is endorsed to teach high school math to do that long-term assignment. We do our best with that. Um, um, and um, oftentimes, I mean, we find ourselves in situations where we have to find other ways to make that work. Um, some of you might had in your classrooms where another teacher in the building's picking up another class because we couldn't find someone who was gonna be um, able to, to carry the load that, the way we needed it to be done. So, it's a lot of work, um, but we do our best to get the most qualified people in those positions.
All those.
I just, I think that you do need to track the data if we go forward with this so that you know that the teachers that got this training are actually utilized in the district.
And how they perform.
I think it's a great first step too for our guest teachers. Really, the research says guest teachers is the preferred um, designation. In addition, you know, other incentives, everyone's fighting for these guest teachers. So, I think this actually is an incentive, and we need to continue to look at incentives to bring in the best people that we can for our district. So, I think this is great, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board update. I wanna thank the five candidates who ran for the school board. Natasha, Mark, Justin, Gotem Batia, and Carol Jones. Thanks for being stewards for the community. I wanna thank everyone for running a, uh, a campaign that was respectful of each other and respectful of the kids of the district. It started day one and ended, and I was almost in tears with a picture of everybody at the end of the night. Everyone congratulating one another. So, thank you to everyone who ran for that office. It was done uh, with dignity and I appreciate it. I'm sure the community appreciated, I know the community appreciated it because we've got several comments saying, I wish other elections were like this one. And so do I, so, great job, everyone. Um, two of our members participated in the National School Board Conference. Um, I don't, and that was Lori and Susan. Uh, I don't know if you wanna make brief comments about your experience at the conference?
So, I um, I definitely appreciated the opportunity to, to go and uh, attend numerous professional development sessions and uh, learn a tremendous amount. I'll give written notes to, to the board af- after, um, after this meeting, I guess. Um, but I will say that um, the very, the very first speaker that they had, outside speaker, came in and he started his talk by talking about that public education is the crown jewel and the crown, or is the jewel and the crown of democracy. And I just thought that was a wonderful way of kicking this off uh, to this gigantic forum of all these people who truly care about, you know, public education. So, um, I gathered a wealth of information. There were subjects from A to Z to attend to and listen to, you know, wisdom. And I greatly appreciate uh, opportunity.
Susan?
Um, ditto on that, I uh, I welcome and appreciate my co-board members feeling that the investment in the professional development is worthwhile to, to have had me attend. Um, I think it was, it was interesting for me, last year, there was so much talk um, around one particular subject, I felt, at the conference. This year, the breadth was just so expansive, but uh, recogni- recognizing that um, one thing that we've talked about a lot and it made part of our goals, that social emotional learning is so critical and being recognized at such a national level. So, we're, we are right where everyone else is on recognizing how important it is to make sure that our students are, are well-rounded. They were, we're wrapping our arms around all of the things that they need to be successful as a student, but really successful as, um, you know, as individuals and in our society. So, um, a lot of time was spent talking about the well-being of our students. But attended a lot of sessions and sent Mike and um, Karen an update, and I think Mike will share it, and uh, thank you. It's in Chicago next year, so-
Yeah.
Looking forward to an opportunity for hopefully all of us to have a chance to attend. So, it's extremely worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, as you know, the board put in a pre- a presentation proposal for the Illinois School Board Association to present. Um, our presentation was approved. So, the Indian Prairie School Board will be giving a presentation on school government, governance, how we work with one another. Could be an eight-hour presentation.
Could be a five-minute one.
It could be a five-minute one, but we're excited to present at the Illinois School Board Association. Also, I received, and I think you guys did too, uh, an update from the Illinois School Board. The resolution process is starting to begin all over again. Uh, considerations for resolutions are due, I think, June twenty-sixth. So, um, if there are people interested in submitting resolutions, we need to begin that process. Um, I did attend the Lend Lobby Day. Um, it's a great experience. Even for an old guy, you begin to understand that democracy is this wonderfully- You begin to understand that democracy is this wonderfully messy process in order to make things work. We met with a variety of representatives. We pulled them off the floor. It was like fun. Representative Costa Howard, Representative Villa, Representative Kiffewitt, Representative Worley, Leader Willis, Minority Leader Duncan, we went into Dirk, and we went into the office. We met with Jesse Ruiz, Deputy Governor. We talked about through Lend several issues, number one being PE. The other one, the three to six percent change in terms of the pensions and the end-of-year retirement monies, capital construction grants and consolidation. Things that I learned there was, I think we need to participate. Physical presence, even when you get to speak with a legislator for about five minutes, makes a difference. They're somewhat impressed that you're in Springfield and not in Naperville, you know, pushing a point. So I think that's something that maybe this district needs to consider. I do think Luda and Lend and everybody represents us well. But I think we have our own unique issues and characteristics that are different than some of our other districts that we participate with. And sometimes, as the fourth-largest district in the state, I think it's important for us to strategically push our agenda at times. And that might mean one of us going down to Springfield in the heat of the battle there. And that's the heat of the battle last Wednesday, to push those agendas. So as we have our own evaluation meetings with IASB where we get to talk about different issues, I think legislative advocacy should be one of the topics that we discuss and see what we can do as a board to be proactive. Just one other thing is that we had a Lend meeting. The Lend packet is there. Jessica Handy from Stand for Children had a proposal to shift pensions into evidence-based funding a little bit. I mean, that's the long and short of it. All I can say is it wasn't universally well-received. It was just a proposal that she wanted to share with districts. I know she's sharing it with other groups, and it appears that she's getting the same reception. As I talked to the legislators or some of the government officials, they didn't think that the pension was going to be addressed this year. That's what they think. We don't, you never know, but and they they thought that was just one proposal.
Hey, Mike, just to add on to what you said, I would love for us to act on being involved in Springfield sooner rather than later. You know, there's two-thirds of the current legislative session that's over. There's still one-third left, and majority of the stuff happens in the last third. You know, there was a previous Education Secretary for the State of Illinois that highly requested that we, as a district, because our board members are so knowledgeable on the issues, that and we're such a big district, like you mentioned, that we do have a voice. If we go down there and we are, of course, respectful, but adamant about our position, that they said we can have a major impact. Like you said, Lend and Luda do a great job, but I think a current elected official, you know, that knows the issues and can help educate these legislators because let's be honest, they can't be experts in all areas. I think that can have a major difference. And and I think we need to take that role as a board, to be an advocate locally at the state level. So I'd love to discuss in the short future, near future, how we can, how we envision that happening and try to do something.
Other things about that Lend Day that you just, as with, they really are trying to work through the budget. Many people, Democrats and Republicans, feel that the initial budget that Governor Pritzker put out was still nebulous and needed to be, details need to be worked out. And that's what they're trying to do, is work out through those details. The other thing I want to say about that PE bill also is there's no appropriation to that.
Really?
Yeah.
What a shock.
So it would be an additional mandate, so with that. Anything else from anyone?
Motion to adjourn.
Approved.